What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're looking at short stack squeezing.
This is a little dicey, but these are like wide ranges. I wouldn't be surprised to see some squeezing.
Yeah, okay. No.
Yeah, it does. It just, it goes not all in.
We're too deep maybe.
Yeah, I was gonna say this, this sounds like not like I've definitely squeezed this spot before and been burnt. It's just not good enough.
Squeezed it before cut off. Uh, open button call. I think it's more likely. Please then.
It is squeezing by the way, it's just, it's not all in.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, it's, it's gonna be definitely be more aggressive to what you're saying, Duly.
So we call, we call or we squeeze small. But.
In your face.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm calling here. Protecting. No, protecting my calling range with like ace, jack, ace ten suited. Maybe like ace nine suited.
Yeah, I think this. Is Jack suited or just calling here?
Think so. First under the gun, what do we?
I think I jam, I think I jam ace, jack suited, but I think ace tens are cool.
I could see ace jack jamming, but I, I think. Uh, I'm gonna jam ace queen suited.
King queen.
Jamming.
Okay. Right, that's.
Hmm, yeah, I'm a pip type. So it's like mixing ace ten, ace nine as a flat, ace jacks just jamming. And look at that king queen suited is actually like a.
Full call.
Just calling.
I mean, Jack.
Plenty big blinds, you're just too likely to go broke before you get a better hand. So it just wants to go with ace jack plus.
Okay. All in. Oh.
You got called twice. Uh, this is, this is. This is a good squeeze. I don't know if you jam it though, like, okay, like the jams. Yeah, the jams at thirty are gonna definitely come more so from the suited side. Um, that being said, like this is. Yeah, it's su- this is like as wide as it gets. Um, I would not all in here with the offsuit combo, but it just jams. It doesn't matter. Yeah, it just jams. You should look at the range though.
Yeah.
It's gonna do normal win with um.
Yeah, just look at this, like it's just jamming basically everything, every like strong blocker.
I mean, I was gonna say, I was gonna free bet school with like a polar range. This isn't really polar ace ten.
So boom. Oh, okay.
Get chopped.
It's a little bit spicy.
This is, alright, I, I am folding this. I am folding this.
And the.
Call.
Cool. When do you squeeze here against E P E B?
I mean.
You have to be pretty strong here, like if there's gonna be a bluff, it may be like ace five suited, but. I don't know.
Give me all your suited tens.
The suited tens, uh, king ten, jack ten. Probably are okay.
James?
Mm hmm. Yeah, thirty, you're jamming those.
You rip that into E P E P?
Doesn't, doesn't having a jack really bad against C P?
What about five suit them?
Ace, five suited maybe.
I'm debating moving one pip up against E P E P and not jamming suited tens and instead jamming suited jacks.
Yeah, I don't hate that. Um, I think that's probably reasonable.
Well, then also gonna be like ace queen off and nothing works.
Like jacks plus ace queen off plus ace.
You're right, um. Jack ten is uh, in there a little bit. Uh, it's, it's just the str- strongest arrangement, right?
This is basically the spot where I went out last night in the G G million.
Hmm.
Under gun. Button instead of under the gun, under the gun, but same similar spot.
Yeah.
You need a blocker.
Really strong range, right?
The strongest range, yeah. Uh, this probably makes a pretty good uh, jam. This region of hands.
I don't hate it.
Yeah, I think your suited wheels are just gonna perform pretty well against those ranges.
Well, I'll suit the Aces.
Uh, you're gonna maybe do some like not all in shenanigan? Well, we're only twenty-five, maybe. If it's in there, it's gonna be like.
What do you do with ace five of?
No, I want ace ten off based on the range we saw before, which is hijack cutoff, going to ace jack, then cut off button. I wanna go to ace ten.
What about ace nine?
Nah, call.
Those offsuit wheels are attractive not all in raises. I wouldn't be surprised if we see them like when it's I C M adjusted a little bit or a smidge deeper. Like you see that they are in there like vapors.
Like the four, ace nine?
If you go to like forty, I think it'll become a little more of a thing.
And Galen, like you're saying, just like the sizes being bigger in a chippy V means that you don't really do a lot of not all in here, but if you had high I C M and you could go tiny, then you'd do a lot more.
Yeah, you just don't get to play around as much. Notice the suited ones kind of faded out and you, you see some elevated frequency from like the eight, ace eight off, but. Yeah. Uh. Need a berry.
Just trapping queens on the button.
I like a jam here.
This is a gym.
What's the worst bear you jamming here?
Probably this. Tens is gonna, I don't, I don't, I don't hate tens a little bit.
Pocket eights.
And tens was jamming E P uh, under gun, under the first one.
Was it? Okay, maybe.
Barrel lead nines.
This is six point three E V. I don't think it's gonna drop that drastically by the time it gets to nine.
I think it's gonna be eight, a sliver of sevens.
Fair point.
Let's go, Lewis.
I said it first.
Well, you said eights.
Yeah.
Did you say sliver of sevens?
Full frequency. Sevens is mainly not jamming.
You have to do every sliver. That's how you win tournaments.
How? Is it?
Yeah.
I like calling. You know, this is.
Just a call.
Okay, what's, what are you doing with king nine?
Offsuit?
Uh, offsuit. Call. Bottom, yeah, that's calling. We're short.
Oh my God, Galen, from your tone, I imagine that you're considering three betting, but you're not. You're thinking about folding.
Nice thing about folding.
It, 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 no, you're like. Where we just fold three with these type of events?
I think king.
I think this one's too good.
This is too good. I, I think this is too good. Like I feel like the. Equity of a hand like this would be like more of attractive three bet than of.
Thinking eight. Oh no.
No, it's way wider. It's pretty wide.
Okay, so. What if we were twenty? No difference.
Even wider.
Actually, I really thought that we lost more, lost more of our blind defense range against two players.
I did too. Honestly, Tim, I honestly, I did too.
I'm too tight here for sure.
I, I think there's also the thing we've seen. We've also seen though where there's a little bit of I C M and you lose a lot more calls.
That's true.
Third player in the pot.
So Louis, Louis, will you do one thing real quick? Okay. So like, will you compare the spot we're looking at right now to? Like a hundred big blinds and then compare it to like, I don't know, a twenty-five percent of the field I C M range? Just to see how resilient this region is, cuz it.
If I remember right, the offsuit like trashy stuff just evaporates.
Okay, so.
Probably still in there with king ten off. Yeah.
Okay, so like my intuition right here was like around king nine, king eight, but. Obviously, like I wasn't adjusting enough for shallow. Now it feel like you adjust it to shallow, but with a little I C M, so. Uh, yeah, like thirty-seven, fifty, something like that. Doesn't really matter.
Fifty's too much. Let's do thirty.
I mean, I think even then you see pretty, pretty significant uh, fact. So we'll see.
Okay, so seven, eight, now it's still in there. I mean, it's well within there. I'm more curious about like the eight and the nine, to be quite honest. So like if you go twenty-five now or something like that. The eights indifferent, nine is kind of the floor. Okay.
And it's making, and nine office. And nine X is making no money.
Near bubble. And it's the same.
So many asex.
It's the same story really, like, okay. So. Yeah.
So what type of scenario does it have to take? It has to be E P versus C P?
E P, P, P M P.
There has no calling range.
Low jack.
This one, this one and then us. But still in there.
Yeah, I don't think king ten's gonna be folding from the big blind. Um.
Winning. Right?
You just, you lose the call ranges is the problem at twenty.
So whatsoever, king ten's always.
I guess, if I can make one other uh, complication, like the deep stack ranges on G T O with third are what? Two point five X or sometimes even two point three X? And if our opponent's a three X, then we can skip a couple raggedy defends there.
Yeah, that's, that, that's true.
Yeah. Like, I mean, it's, it's a game of thin edges, but you can, you can let like king nine off go against the three X open maybe in a cold call.
Funny, look at these clouds.
How about this? What's the worst hand you call here?
Yeah.
Ace, jack suited.
Ooh, that's a good one. That's a good one, Louis. That's, that's tough, man. Ace jack suited is tough.
Ace queen suited.
Your worst pair.
Not even tough with folding.
Seven.
Nines. Nine to eight, eight's actually.
Sevens, eighth, like in theory, where I think small blind is actually.
Yeah, yeah, I was in this sport with sixes yesterday.
Theory, I think just.
Tens.
I like eights. I think eights is close.
Yeah, I'm somewhere around eight or nine, so.
So like ace jacks.
Buttons range is actually kind of weak here in uh, like in theory, it's like it's a lot of just like deuces, right?
I wasn't gonna say that, Tim, but it's gonna be like you're, you're crushing the aces that he's doing this with typically? Like he should have like.
Yeah. I don't think buttons jam in any asex. He's got like king jack suited, right? Like.
I think he has a couple, I think he has a couple really raggedy, yeah, offsuit aces.
Ace nine off, ace ten off, maybe. Wait, wait now.
Game seems a bit a little wider.
Wait, this is the wide range?
Yes, this is big one. We said ace jack too good in these V. Well, that's the thing I was trying to get at, like look at buttons jamming range and that starts the whole hand.
You know, it's based on that.
Dude, I ain't never flipping versus two range.
Only has like trashy aces and deuces and threes, like.
Yeah, look. Okay, and like this is the reason I think we get to go so wide is because this range is in theory wider than it is in reality, I think.
Yeah.
And with like, and with like pocket fives, we're not dominated by a single hand in buttons jamming range. Like, pocket fives were either dominating him or we're flipping.
Even if we're doing ten percent of aces, we're still in there with sixes.
This is, this is also chippy V, keep in mind, like twenty, twenty effective chippy V is kind of like. You have to be playing a very specific format to make this reality.
I was like torn between ace nine and ace ten. But I'm not wearing your jack nine suited though.
Well, uh, that's, that's the point. Like if you, if you adjusted for I C M like Danny suggesting like thirty-seven percent, I guarantee like uh. You'll get a more realistic response to what you think.
Yeah, and adjust like button to be jamming like pocket sevens, ace jack off kind of hands, cuz that's what I think he has a lot.
Go to the button. Okay, so this is a much more stripped down range. This is a much more stripped down call range. And now like first this, this is tighter because of the button jamming range. Like if you go to seventeen effective now or something where he actually has. A more constructed jamming range.
This is my real life range.
Yeah, you said tens can and I said ace queen suited.
Yeah, I mean like because I'm not just, I don't play flipping versus two ranges with twenty bigs and it's relatively soft.
But if it's early, you can rebuy, you know, you, your pairs will have more than uh, the equity.
Okay, so this, this is gonna be a little more. This is, this is, oh, this is near bubbles is, right?
Yeah. So yeah, okay, is this a good idea?
Wait, so ace king folds there, huh? I think I made that mistake the other day near the bubble.
Uh, see this, this is challenging because it's not really a jamming range. So you're, yeah, you're gonna get uh.
It's just pocketfuls.
It's gonna be weird.
Yeah, do you wanna take Galen's suggestion? Click it down to seventeen and see if uh.
Yeah, I'll have a lot more jamming at seventeen.
I can't.
Yeah, they, you probably have to find an asymmetrical range. If you really wanna find a uh. You really wanna find a realistic range, you gotta make the button open for two and then have the small blind jam and then you'll probably get like something a little more realistic, I guess.
The smallest one is twenty.
Yeah, so look at twenty and then two X jam and then look at the overcalling range. So it's just like robust, like this makes sense. Now you'll, you'll kind of see like what this is probably. Pretty close estimations of what like a jam call overcalling range should look like.
Like ace ten and sevens.
Mm hmm.
You can only do this if you know the small blinds jam appropriately, right? Like if he's a good, good player, then fine, but if he's just like a rag, a wreck, then it's probably bad all that way.
I'm a win here.
I think all ends good.
What about king queen suited there?
Uh, probably a jam maxi.
Yeah, that's a good bluff. In the linear part.
This is probably a competitive option also.
Hijack between jam and cool, I think, but mostly.
I like, I like that answer. I like that answer.
Mostly call.
Anyone squeezing?
Too shallow at a position.
Yep.
Yeah, stick by call.
Okay.
Well, just a call. What do you jam here?
I guess it has to be.
Queen jack suited, queen ten suited.
I think more like suited, like suited tens more than suited jacks. Yeah.
I got three of them. Not queen jack for some reason.
Ace eight feels bad.
Ace eight suited. That makes sense.
Feels bad.
That's high.
I love that diagonal line from jack, jack, queen ten.
I saw that too. King nine, ace eight.
Cool.
That is nice.
We saw this. I think you're just jamming these middle regions. Yeah, well, okay.
It's different.
Three bet, my god.
It's U T G and there's a caller.
Yeah, it's not.
It's not quite the same.
Yeah, mixing hard, right?
How do you play this three bet if it goes three bet jam call?
I think you fold then.
I mean, like.
I, I bet the solver calls it off. Solver's such a fish.
I think you call against one jammer.
What's it do with eights if it's the bottom which calls instead of the cutoff?
Danny, what do you think you're more likely to call versus one jammer or two jammers?
One jammer, because the second guy's gonna have nines and tens and jacks a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I think one too, obviously, but I don't know.
Or like nines and tens exactly.
It feels.
Or aces, or he'll just have some trap. Like if the caller gets, gets in there too, he just has.
Well, it doesn't matter anymore because the spot is gone, Danny. Let it go.
Alright.
Well, people didn't care about that. Three bet and then guess, just three bet it and then guess what to do, whatever it happens against you.
I mean, I'll, I'll tell you this one. I'm not three betting. There you go.
I fold here.
Either fold.
Easy, easy.
Easy done.
Yeah, just flat. Come on, set mine.
I don't know. I thought it was clear. It was uh, all the small pairs are calling.
That wasn't the question that was asked though.
You, you, you're supposed to call with it.
It had a, it had a three bet range for eights, which.
The time on it. Alright, here we are.
It's an interesting question.
No, 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 that, that, the question was, what do you think's more likely? Are you calling eights more frequently versus one jammer, back jammer or two jammers?
So if you make a raise here.
Raise.
Small blind, is this not the?
He made small blind jam, which is gonna make, you gotta make it not all in.
I think Ken's right. This might be the ace queen one, but uh.
The wrong hand, ain't it?
Uh, yeah.
We were big blind, right? Are we small blind?
Where'd it go? It's gone.
Weird.
There we go.
That's.
Right.
So three bet.
Weren't we? Oh yeah, we were twenty-five effective.
Let's see, under the gun, jam and see what we do if small blind folds and if small blind calls.
If cut off.
If cut off calls.
Cut off, whatever.
I mean, uh, cut off. Man, it's weird to call here cuz like we're just torched by that under the gun range. It was just like all pairs that beat us.
Now, what if both of them?
Yeah.
Now kings plus.
Makes sense.
So was that where they both call?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, ace five off, we call.
Oh. Small blind.
Sorry, I thought we were big blind. Thought we were.
Yeah, small blind, small blind. This is a jam, I think.
Easy jam.
Is it?
Uh, on the button?
I'm pretty confident, I'm pretty confident this is a jam.
Okay.
What else you jam?
I don't find it.
Jack suited.
You're gonna jam like at twenty big blinds versus these two ranges. I think you jam almost most, just most of your suited Broadway stuff is probably gonna be very attractive here.
It's gonna be similar to the last one.
Queen flats, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. King, queen flats. The queen again, not very attract, the queen not very attractive.
Yeah, queen jack not, check ten not.
Jack ten actually in the dumps here. I'm probably making mistakes with jack ten.
Yeah, I actually like jack ten a lot in spots like this. I don't know why.
Queen jack mostly folded, interesting.
A little shallow, uh, like the pot's gonna be seven and you'll have eighteen behind. It's like, it's dicey.
I mean, we're in position though on the button, but.
Queen off folds, wow.
This all looks good.
Lot doing that.
So in P T four, if we do this uh, squeezing, will it be like a sign as a three bet or as a squeeze as that?
You'll have to set it, uh, if you just set multiple opponents in a three bet, I think there's actually a spot for like squeeze and P T four. If you look at our actions and opportunities. You just have to set how many villains you want, so you're not squeezing the whole table or something crazy.
Yeah, but I mean, is this move gonna raise our tribute uh, percentage?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, fold here. I think ace jack off is the bottom. I don't know what to do with ace ten off there.
Alright, I, I call here again.
Cool, cool. You know what they're doing now, right?
Under the gun, under the gun, one crazy call.
This is stronger ranges.
I've definitely jammed it before.
We saw it earlier.
I'm not surprised, Louis. Sounds like something you would do.
It was cut off though, not U T G one.
Alright, I'm flattening here and I don't care.
Fold.
You're a nit, Danny. I'm calling here.
No.
I'm calling here.
Button. I thought we were.
Give me position or give me death.
It's not good enough against two players.
You're not good enough for two players.
What's the worst suited king we did, we played here?
I mean, I guess this would be like one better.
We don't flat any, we squeeze early. It's like king queen suited. Yeah, king nine flats. Alright, I take it back.
Add more blinds and you can play that, Galen. You're okay at forty.
Is it?
Yeah.
Thirty-five?
I don't know.
Well, I don't know about that.
Maybe at sixty.
Halen thinks he's better than G T O, so he can, he can play it profitably.
Are you playing versus Michael Adamo in your five dollar games, Louis?
Look at him, look at him. He's angry. Um, I don't know. I, I don't know their names. I don't ask in chat.
Well, ask him if it's Stephen Chidwick next time in, in your five dollar game and tell me.
Steve, is that you? Last night, Michael Assaveto, but I don't think it was him.
Keep getting the same hand. Oh, this is a good one. I would call.
Oh, wasn't it win?
Wanna call?
I could definitely see it being a jam.
I'm always jamming here.
Feels like a jam.
You're always jamming?
Always, ninety-nine point eight percent of the time.
Good to know.
What about the sliver?
I will let, we'll let the uh, we'll let that always slide on that one for sure.
Oh, we, we got him. We binked that four.
I'm folding.
Hold, yeah.
I'm folding.
What are you doing? Is king jack in there?
Oh, that's a good, that's a good question, Joey. King jack is, you think? I don't know. King jack feels close.
King jack's not in there.
Probably not. You're probably right.
I think our offsuit range is just in really bad shape here.
You're probably right.
All of these plays with king queen. Call. Hold with the king queen.
Can't fold. It's too wide.
You call, I think.
So if it was under the gun one. Instead of hijack, I would be more likely to call, but since it's hijack and cutoff, I think I'm more likely to squeeze.
Think he got it backwards.
Maybe.
Oh. King queen off.
King queen off, can get in there.
King queen suited squeeze. Can you change the opener to? That's too much work, whatever.
Under the gun one instead of hijack.
Yeah, I made a mistake earlier where I cold cooled. King jacko on the bottom versus hijack, but apparently I only cool gets a cutoff.
Who lose? Wait, just versus, versus one player? I think that's the favorite.
For the ace four suited, can we look at that at a thirty-seven percent field? And see what, what it's doing, the previous hand.
You don't uh. What do you, what do you say in the squeeze jam?
Yeah, the ace four squeeze jam.
It probably just becomes not all in sizing. How deep were we?
Twenty, twenty.
Oh, probably still jammed, I would say, I would think.
It's mixing here, so.
Uh, it's the. It was a different hand.
Was it?
Yeah, it was hijack and button and we were big blind.
What are you talking about?
For twenty, the ace four suited hand.
Danny wants to see hijack, button, big blind for twenty under I C M.
I mean, if it's under I C M, it's gonna shove the, the aces, the, the block.
I think, I think it'll probably still jam this region.
And change to I C M, thirty-seven percent I C M.
I feel like if we're just gonna do the like um, pre flop. You should probably set it for um, fifty percent.
It was twenty effective.
I think it's, I think it's important to understand where the ranges shipped and changed though throughout the tournament though, right, Joe? Like being able to estimate what a chippy V range is and how like maybe uh. A slight risk premium adjusts that, I think has got some merit to it.
We can do the other half of the. With I C M, it's no problem.
Hijack cutoff.
Hey, Jack?
Hijack cutoff, yeah. And we're a big blind. Okay, so. Yeah. Still full, but some of the.
One of the big differences here is like you don't really have, the cutoff range gets kind of strapped here, so it, it gets kind of goofy.
Alright, now there's more calling, yeah. Yeah, if we wanna do like the second half with I C M, I would, I would be for that. I keep finding myself later on unsure how to adjust. Not wanting to punt. Just shovel in like. A slightly above average stack of twenty bigs.
Yeah. Yeah, I do think, especially where like.
What Lewis would do and do the opposite.
Shots.
Louis played well yesterday.
Especially when like some people at your tables are just incredibly tight deep in the tournament. You realize that there are like people who are only playing like tens plus from early position, you know?
I think I just, I think I just cool.
I like jam. I like jamming, I think.
It's a call, we've seen King Queen two call a lot against most formations.
Probably.
I'm torn.
I still like jamming, I think.
Now, we're gonna jam suited tens.
Maybe.
The EV is gonna be similar.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, it's gonna be in there, like, it's not a mistake.
Uh, so we'll never know, huh?
The world may never know.
Whether it mixed. There you go.
Three bet small, oh no, it's two way.
I don't, I don't hate that, honestly, I don't hate that, Louis, I think that's probably a fine.
I'm just. I prefer, I prefer to fold and jam, it's low jack, cut off. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
If that were only cutoff, then I like the three bet small.
Three bet small was the second most competitive option there, but yeah, folding. I call here.
Maybe a silver raise.
I think it might be a fold, you know, but.
Slides the floor, yeah, I could see folding, but.
I could see fold, yeah.
I could see jam too.
Like this hij- this hijack cooling range is gonna be super strong.
It's a fold, I knew it. What are we raising him? Win nine.
This feels pretty easy jam.
What is it, ace queen? That was queen two.
I agree.
Yeah, jam, yeah.
And what do you do here with super dance?
Jam.
Jam.
I think you jam all, yeah. I think you jam, I think you jam all of them.
Hey.
Jack ten's the one, you might not.
Everything Broadway. I suit the ace. Okay. Oh, and uh, a standard jack, maybe a bit of king queen?
Hmm. I don't know, what do you do, jam here, I guess? Twenty big blinds.
Um, I'm calling you.
I like calling, to be honest, but I wouldn't be surprised to see jams.
I would jam here, well, depends on their stats, probably. I might call.
I like folding here.
Yeah, I'd fold.
Easy fold.
Just call, I guess.
Might jam a sliver.
Jamming seems plenty as.
Yeah, it is plenty, but I, I know it's probably got like a sliver.
Yes, what are you doing, jam?
No, no, no.
Ace freeze.
If you're thirty, you could three bet small, but you can't, you can't jam.
No, I mean, I cool here.
Ace eight, you call? Eight six?
I mean, we're cooling all the.
Ace five off suit Lewis.
Yeah.
You look at the nerd again in the eye, what do you do?
I would fold ace six here, to be honest.
Ace six, ace five, Lewis, come on.
I could get in your camp with ace five off suit slivers.
Oh, you got done it with you, you're in trouble.
Slivers, slivers.
I don't think any offsuit jams, except like ace queen.
Yeah, so the ace.
There's nothing here.
Ace five suited.
Those ones, three bets small.
It was gonna be just a blunder.
Well, if you had a little risk premium, I guarantee it's probably in there. That region performs pretty well as a bluff.
We shall see. Lewis, wanna jam?
Are we short enough to make it eight? I mean, deep enough to make it eight? No, we're not.
You're deep enough to fold sixty percent of the time.
All in.
Oh, in.
Alright, what's the worst part we jam here, sevens?
I think you jam sixes, actually, I think sixes.
Fives.
I was surprised by how low it went before, so I'm gonna go with sixes.
Sevens and suited that.
Fives, we're just smoked by the caller, I guess, too much.
Cool.
Yeah, right? Never sweet thing?
No.
No.
But it was a scam, cuz there was no three bets small. I'm calling here.
Cool, we're on the bottom.
Alright. It might fold.
Oh, in.
At thirty?
Suited dance, this is a good position, we have thirty fine big lines, I'm just calling her.
I think King Jack suited is all in, King ten suited, I don't know what to do.
What about tracing, maybe some reason?
Maybe, maybe.
It's King Jack all in, I don't know, would call with King Jack as well. Let's see. Okay, make same. With King Jack's the one that jumps. Suit the tens mostly a call here.
Or CUTG hijack, okay.
Oh.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you do with King ten off here?
Fold.
Fold. I mean, it's early position, a middle position, cool, so.
Even low jack. Me, look at this.
I mean, that the low jack range is gonna be strong.
Ahah. All in.
Really?
Against a cutoff open?
I think it might be a cool.
I'm just calling here.
Yeah.
Oh.
Do we jam King ten suited?
Yeah.
All the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
Except for, except for Jack ten.
That's right.
Yeah, nine, nines are bad against a cutoff range.
Yeah, I think, I think you can actually, you can jam it, you can jam it if there's not just one, if it's just one guy. But not against two.
Jack eight suited, who's finding it?
No, well, actually, I don't know, maybe a little bit of stuff in that region, if not Jack eight, maybe like ten nine or something sometimes.
I three bet jammed Jack seven suited yesterday on the bubble when I covered the guy. For twenty.
And he folded probably if it was on the bubble.
And he folded, yeah, I think it's actually like just correct.
I think that's theory, yeah, if you're on the bubble.
It was like small blind versus cutoff.
Yeah. For like twenty or twenty five bigs or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, seems good. Uh, well, checks suited, I kinda wanna go for it here. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think this is a good, good one.
Yeah, against those early positions, we've switched to suited Jacks, suited tendons against like middle and late position.
Yeah.
Jackson, just easy call.
Just complete, yeah.
Yeah.
What do you do with Jack nine? Where's the floor, Jack eight?
Good question.
Yeah, floor might be somewhere in the jacket region.
Could see Jack seven. Check six.
Jack seven full frequency.
Who's calling with queen free here? Like.
Although again, like, we never have zero ICMs, like, a little bit of ICM, drop like two pips off the opposite side.
At least two bits.
Yeah.
Uh, three bets small. Lewis, what's wrong with you?
I, I swear we saw this before.
We saw this in some formation.
Just a fold, no?
No.
Oh, he nailed it.
Yeah, this is the one, this is the one.
You don't really fold suited nines from the button that much.
Well?
Well, Jack nine folds, but queen, queen nine, king nine are usually in there from the button.
Queen nine, Lewis, I think you got lucky here.
No, cuz I saw, I saw it a few, a few hands ago.
You saw it.
He's dialed in, he's dialed all the way in.
Right, I take screenshots of all these ranges.
He's got a, he's got a book three thousand pages long, he's like, he's like thumbing through it at the tables, trying to find his range.
Special for, okay.
No, that, that, that's only ICM, the queen six.
Looking through his binder of.
I see, I see what we're doing, so here, three bet?
Let's, let's do it, maybe we'll get a play post flop one time.
Woo, no.
Never mind.
No, it's multi ways, there's never gonna be a soul.
No, if only one of them calls, then it's fine.
Hmm.
We saw that on Friday.
Just a call. Ooh, ooh. Okay, we just call here. What's the worst offsuit base we jam?
Ace ten, no.
It's, it's Jack.
It's Jack for sure, it's ten.
It's some, it's somewhere around ten or Jack.
This is too early position to jam ace ten against them, we'd see that more from like cutoff button or later.
So ace ten suited, anyone's in here?
Oh, he tends to.
Calls.
Yeah, I think still cool, ace ten suited, actually, he's gonna mix, he's gonna mix jam and cool ace ten suited.
Ace Jack off and not ace.
Oh, no. Uh, just three bets.
Nine.
I was thinking ace ten would like free bet a tiny sliver, and it does.
I thought there would be like these suited tens, but no.
It is.
The reason it's just on its little island.
Yeah, is that cuz we dominate other tens and we wanna keep them in? Or, uh, and we dominate other potential like flush, flush draw hands and stuff, like why ace ten? I don't know, we can make Broadway.
Well, I've been. Protecting your flating range with a strong enough hand here, which is why it chooses the king queens as well.
Go, Joey?
I've been noticing that like the, the bottom bluffing, like if it's jacks or not, or tens, or maybe nines, that the suited ace one of that has been calling.
And then the one below, one pip below likes to jam.
That I haven't noticed if it's consistent.
Okay.
I think, I think, yeah, I think there's like a tiny boomerang.
We did see the ace eight before with the, with the king nine and the queen ten and.
It's queen nine, it's queen nine, it's a bit interesting.
What was it doing with queen nine?
It was like, it was like free betting some push at the time.
Oh, I see, huh?
Holding?
Yeah, I think this is a fold.
I would call here. This is a fold, or, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I pulled this. Jack nine probably folds a little bit.
This is mostly cooling, sometimes jamming, ace four suited will be jamming more.
Lily goat, look at the, I wanna see. Yeah, see, we got the tens, the suited tens in range and the ace tens just pliding.
Or basically, we just remember that suited tens, we just shot from the bottom, squeezing a lot, I don't know, against a lot of positions. Are we gonna be okay if we're gonna remember this? Suited tens and then ace nine. It's kinda hard to memorize all these range, squeezing ranges.
You get, you get a good instinct over time, right?
Yeah, the more you look at it.
And even if you're like one pip off, like, think about how, you know, think about yourself from one or two or three years ago, and like, how bad you were, like, I'm speaking for myself. And like, our opponents are like that, you know, like.
Oh, in.
Rip it.
What about ace ten suited?
Cool.
What about ace nine suited?
It's gonna be like.
I think both of those jam. We're small.
Ace ten does not jam, but ace nine does.
Yeah, ace ten doesn't jam, I think we have a little like board coverage.
Yeah. Even small blind at twenty, alright.
Suit it tense again.
King queen suited does though. Notably.
So.
All in.
Uh, mix, just call. And this one is the weird one.
It's the King ten, right? This one, it's like King ten, King Jack.
Yep, ace nine, exactly.
Yeah, ace nine, King, ace eight, King nine.
But if we're small blind here, then it does jam?
Yeah, because previous hat was almost the same, we saw that King Queen suited jams from the small blind. So just a call here.
Not even King Jack.
So against the late position, late position. We pivot to jamming a bunch of suited aces and we call more of the suited ten suited Jack. Hmm. At twenty as well. Fold.
What about king queen?
Offsuit?
I, queen off, queen off is a trap.
I would fold still, I think.
I'm playing. Queen off, might be mixed with folding in other actions.
King Jack starts mixing.
I say king queen is low frequency three bet, high frequency call.
It's just a call, yeah. Don't wanna keep horse in there and stack off when it flops top pair.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was gonna say.
It's just a call.
Yeah.
Again, CUTG one and hijack, so I guess it's like early, early where we fold king queen here?
It doesn't really matter at twenty big blinds, you're just looking to flop top pair and top pair second kicker is just fine to put it all in with.
Yeah, I mean, we don't wanna cold cool, king queen.
Was it at twenty five that it folded? We saw it fold in one spot a little bit ago.
I mean, like, it, what, it's really bad to cold cool EP when there's all these three jam stacks.
I don't know about this one. I kinda wanna shove, but I'm afraid to shove it against under the gun.
I think it's three bet.
Yeah, cutoffs range is gonna be pretty good, this is gonna min, min three better call a lot.
Yeah, I can go for that. No, no, you need, you want ace queen off to go all in, it's a big difference.
Is this because?
Yeah, thirty, yeah, and cuz we're thirty deep.
Yeah, and because UTG opened and cutoff just called, cutoffs range is not gonna be trash, so.
Win, rip it.
Yep, this is like the core of our jamming range, spot in the middle.
So if we rip suited dance like this, it means we fly call with ace ten or we rep ace nine, right?
I think that's more or less it, you can find a little bit of fun, yes, but yeah, that, that's the idea.
I think you might rip, do you rip King nine? Yeah.
Did the dance, oh.
It broke.
I mean, it's always doing a little bit of like board coverage and stuff, but whatever.
It works.
I don't really think, but.
Time we jam ace ten as well.
Yeah.
Cool. Even the spots where flats, ace ten, and jamming stuff around it, like, it can't be a big mistake if you're just jamming it.
I agree.
Ace ten off here, what do you do?
Ace.
Call.
I'm calling.
Ace ten off is a call.
Ace.
Call it, or three bets.
Ace check off, ace check off can rip. Maybe at twenty five, maybe not thirty.
Louis, go back to the last hand two effort.
The last one.
Does it, they, what, the King ten, when you were talking about the ace ten? The heuristic is when it was at the bo- if tens were the bottom of shoving. Here, here pocket tens aren't quite the bottom, cuz there's King nine.
Okay.
I'm only raising ace queen off here, I'm ace Jack, I'm still just calling.
Calling is Jack here, Ken.
Yeah.
Let's see it. I think ace ten three bet small mainly. Nope.
Little bit.
Low jack, ace jack, okay. Alright. We were calling like really wide on kings here.
Yeah, I noticed that, uh.
Like king six, but not a six.
Yeah, screw a six. It's a bad hand.
I think this was a jam.
Ace ten.
I either call this, sometimes I even fold to be honest, even though you're probably not supposed to.
You never go in here, Ken?
No.
Why not?
I think it was.
Feels too wide to me. Like if you get called, you're not.
I think this is a call.
Yeah, you get called with this, it's like, what are you doing?
Yeah, right?
I was gonna say ace eight, but it's ace nine.
At least you can make the wheels like ace four and ace five for sure feel a lot better than ace six and ace seven.
Two point one.
Three bit smooth.
Just all the. Three bet.
Nah, three bet. We're not heads up. I don't think we have calls when we're not heads up with aces.
Three bets small.
Yeah, it's a disaster. Let the big blind go to the flop four way probably.
Yeah.
Uh, I think this can raise.
All the cookies?
Yeah, it's, it's E P N P, so I've lost.
It's come from, I'm calling.
It's gonna be king jack.
Ah, James.
It's gonna be king jack, king queen.
And then ace jack calls.
I'll get that.
So how do you think about that heuristic? Alright, I've been, it's been earlier opens. When the suited jacks are the bottom, ace jack suited will call. If the suited tens are the bottom, like against under the gun one or low jack, then ace ten suited calls.
So you're jamming the king X and calling the ace X basically.
Yeah. Or it doesn't always necessarily call. Sometimes it makes me, but it doesn't go all in.
Yeah, but just to think of the general heuristic, so if the bottom of your jamming range is the jack, you call the ace jack, jam the king jack at the bottoms, the ten, jam the king ten, call the ace ten.
Yeah, yeah, when it's like E P and then E P cool, you're always jamming like the king jack, the king queen and the queen jack, the sort of linear bluffs.
Alright, wow.
I see him time.
Yeah.
But we come for a lot of these today. I'm tired.
Yeah, they're all the same.
Nired, oh my goodness.
Yeah, they, they are pretty similar, so.
Forty hands. Is that all it takes? See what's to get the best of you?
I mean, I was playing two, two four yesterday.
Forty hands, I looked at like ten of them. Busy doing other shit.
Uh huh.
Funny tabling?
No, I'm actually nonsense. I'm lying. I'm just fucking start from the web.
He's, he's on politics.
No.
How's Tucker?
Twitter, Yahoo, couple discords. Still a couple songs.
Okay, fifty percent of their field left.
So I bought G T O whiz this morning before I'd had any coffee and I accidentally bought the cash game one.
Wow.
I sent them an email.
They'll straight it out.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an opportunity to just try to cash that in.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. You can become a, a cash master.
Look at those tip, look at, oh, those ranges, man. Have fun with those.
Did you vote the N L subscription, Danny?
Let's try this.
Uh, yeah.
So this is now I see him.
Yeah, this is with fifty percent of the field.
Okay.
Right?
This.
Right.
Fifty percent.
This one's quite hard.
I think it won't shift it too much at fifty.
I think it's still jams.
I would jam.
No.
I was gonna say, uh, we're losing.
Losing E V now.
It's, it's gonna be king queen, king jack then. Yeah, king queen, king jack, basically.
Alright. So already a million. Wow. Like at least two bits tighter, right?
Ace jack off was calling. Not all.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, drops out the bottom of the range. Probably a queen jack because it does not have a blocker, like that could have blocked her.
It has two blockers.
Yeah.
Block queens and you block jacks.
I mean, this, this could go in.
Alright, they're giving us the easy ones to start. We appreciate it.
Hold.
Fold.
Okay, and king queen off?
We fold now, I think.
I don't know.
Bold, yeah.
I'm like king queen folder.
King queen off, ace ten off.
Bold, ace enough them.
Ace jack off.
I mean, this under the gun two range is gonna be fucking strong as fuck.
Yeah, yeah, so flag calling off of seventeen big blinds. What does he have?
Low jacks.
He has like aces.
I think I'm all in with ace jack. I don't know.
He has aces and maybe something like ace five.
Have a look. Ace jack is playing.
Raise five point five.
Queen is not playing. E V are not very good for ace.
Yeah, king queen off just becomes trash in I C M.
Louis, what's he under the gun two range?
Uh?
Well, what's he under the gun two range here?
The caller.
Eh, not very big, right? He has aces, a jack suited, nines, eights.
Hmm.
Sliver.
Yeah.
Sliver warrior.
Hmm.
Fold.
I'm not so, I think I fold, but I'm not a hundred percent sure it's.
I mean, having queen nine might be good in I C M because those bad lockers.
Okay, okay. I was wondering if there was a, a lot of flapping here, but there is, so okay.
From the button here.
Fold.
Oh, what I C M spot is this?
Fifty percent of the field left.
Okay.
How should we play the button with fifty?
Very tight.
Very tight. Wow, the wheels. He's checked off, really? Not even a foul with queen jack suited. Okay.
When I'm this short and it goes raise call, I really don't want to have a call range for it. I mean, like there's a few select hands, but.
I still like defining my button. I'm, I'm too wide. I like to be in position.
I'm just throwing away two bigs a lot, I feel like.
S P L is gonna be sure as well.
This is an easy fold.
Fold, good. Okay, what about ace jack off here?
Ace ten off.
I mean, I'm not folding ace jack.
Ace jack.
Still a fold, I guess.
Could play, take a flat and play cautious.
Woo, look at this.
Yeah, I can see the three bet. I was kind of thinking it might be a three better fold actually too. I, I chose to call.
The major also. Look at this ten, but it's still in. Right, it's ten off, it's ten off.
What if he do, if, what do you do if he played live and under gun one looked nervous after a flag call?
Even worse, well. It looked into his eyes.
Looked nervous.
My ace jack shrinks even worse.
I mean, good luck to you if you can get live reads. I certainly can't.
A fold.
Okay, what's your calling range here?
Ace queen?
Ace jack suited.
Yeah, I'm not sure if ace jack.
No.
Or ace ten, I think ace ten. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, ace jack feels reasonable, um.
Ace queen suited.
Ace queen off.
Ace queen suited? You're not playing ace jack suited?
No.
I think it's, um.
Like a nine.
I think it's maybe tens plus ace, king O, ace queen suited plus.
Way.
Yeah.
It was way.
No, I'm team Lewis here.
Am I ace ten suited there?
No.
If it's a B K O.
Ten suited.
Ace jack. But I think it's gonna.
I wouldn't be surprised if ace tens in there, but I'm usually trying to be a little bit tighter. So like I'm ace jack suited.
Woo hoo. Not even tens and ace queen suited.
No, you know, I was gonna say jacks, but then Ken said ten, so I got convinced.
Louis was a maniac there.
I said nine.
Tens and ace queen suited.
Yeah.
Okay.
Way too tight, Louis.
At the bottom bubble.
It's fifty percent left. Then it's a fold, this one.
Yeah, for sure, right?
Fold.
Position, bro. Sure, this hand, what about range? What about ace ten off?
Bold.
Yeah.
Maybe ace ten suited. So.
Call.
Damn.
Crazy how tight you have to be and it's not even.
Ace jack suited is a call.
It's fifty percent.
Yeah, this is part of why I've been itching to look at this stuff.
I mean, you could probably, you could probably go wider though than that raging game, like. Like, cause people.
Yeah, cause the, the flatter is not gonna have a correct range most of the time.
Like, so I think you can, you can expand tens and ace queen, you know, I, I think that's perfectly fine.
You mean racing or calling?
Well, this hand folds, right?
Yeah, fold.
Oh, boy.
Rip it.
I think it's fold. It's E P.
Boy, I don't know. I'm torn.
I mean, it's E P minimum position cool.
Yeah, makes sense.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be king jack, king queen. Oh, actually, the king queen not that much.
Like jack ten better than queen jack. It gets more folds.
Um, folds out king queen.
And I probably got some more K T when called.
In game, they just snap you off with king queen though. That's, that's the thing.
Yeah, for sure.
These guys don't care, man. I saw so many guys punting it off yesterday, just like call calling ace ten.
Yeah, they, I had an I C M spot where I, I, I jammed a win again from under the gun one for ten. We have a jack, king jack suited and the guy called me with queen, queen jack suited. And I lost.
This one's a fold, right?
Uh, I don't hate a three bet. I know, he's only got nineteen, yeah. What if he was, low jack was deeper? I wonder if we get the raise.
How do we play ace ten suited here?
Cool.
Mostly.
Oh.
That's the one we want to call. Oh, jam.
Anything, can't make a mistake.
That heuristic we were looking at was chippy V.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it kind of falls out now, huh?
Yeah, I haven't seen it duplicated in any of the I C M spots.
Lockers are more relevant now, so aces become better. Ace X.
And I think we just generally have a little bit left calling, right?
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, man, I'm ripping it.
Yeah, I kind of like this as a jam.
So I find with myself when I study these spots, I often conflate, trying to figure out what G T O is and actually like I can't get out of my mind how I play against the games I'm in and I can sort of conflate the ranges. That makes.
I like six point five.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna free that small.
I thought when I C M came in, the queens, the small three bets started falling out in favor of more jamming.
I fold this. Ace three.
Maybe I have it backward.
I think ace three plays ace two folds.
The deeper the stacks, it. You have to be a little bit more shallow than chip E V to get the same shelves in.
Okay.
I mean, this cooler range from the cutoff, uh, is like super strong. It's gonna be like some, yeah. Well, aces, ace ten.
Jack ten suited, pocket sixes.
I gotta be really cautious, right? When I C M kicks in and then there's an over caller, because this guy's always super like narrow.
I'm just weeding here. Especially when he's so short. I think there's more room for him to call like here where he's thirty big blinds, but like seventeen big blinds, come on.
I think this might be a free bet fold.
Yeah, I'm three, I'm three bet.
I would still jam, but it's probably wrong.
No, it's not the jam in I C M.
That mean, it is.
That mean be good.
Jam and be good.
It's ace queen suited. To jam toe or is it just three bet?
No, when I would three bet small.
You can call off easier, right? More happy.
And it plays better post when you get called.
Yeah. Yeah, ace queen suited wants in there. You want to catch his blush with that, I guess, better.
And it's only making it six over two and a call. It's still just six. It's like so small.
I C M.
I C M, yeah, I C M range is super small.
Old.
Ooh.
Actually, we only got sixteen though, but I still think it's a fold.
Wait, we saw this earlier. It folded, right? Chippy V it called, but I C M, it was only like a tens plus.
Oh, man.
Oh, apparently it's gonna be starting at eights. Wow.
Cool at eights makes sense. Like it's just so strong.
Maybe it was like a twenty five percent that it was ten plus.
A huge drop from eights to sevens though. E V wise, it's just a huge drop.
Sixes are losing any.
Not sure why that is, but it is.
Ace two off, so they call it.
It's a call here.
I think he call.
No, no.
Wow.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
So what's it ace ten?
Oh, not even calling king ten off here.
Easy fifty percent.
You can see it at top left easy by the way, so you can always check.
Cool.
Like seven, five off better than ace five off.
Yeah, you hit the ace, it's no good a lot and you just can't, can't hold anyway.
You calling?
Yeah.
Think so, right? Yeah.
There we get direct odds, right? So, um, I.
We only have nine. I think this is a theory call with jacks.
Yeah, I'm not folding.
Right, suited, suited aces, constructor range, suited aces.
So here's the problem, low jack is only jamming very few combos here for eighteen bags. It's like a weird range, right? So I don't even know what's going on.
The, it's gonna be the suited ace queen.
You know, it's like ace queen off, like king jack suited or something like that, pocket, maybe not even a pair.
Well, there's a bunch, there's a bunch.
Enough for our call range, I mean.
So. For this one.
So I guess we're probably at a suited ace. You only got ten bags.
No. Don't be silly. Don't be silly.
Bags, I mean, come on.
What, you're calling it off against two ranges? What do you mean?
Man, what are you, my tie? I got tons of suck out equity.
You gotta preserve your life.
Oh, suck out equity, oh my goodness. I think we do, we do get to cool a bit wider, cause we.
You're hanging up the noose in the closet.
I feel like we would all get such good habits of like passing up on bad spots if we knew. When we were gonna get Aces next hand, like if it would tell you, oh, you folded, you busted, but like, by the way, you were gonna get Aces next hand. That'd be such a good trainer, train you to like not take bad spots like this.
Oh, I wanna be trained to fold the river, that's why I wanna be trained to.
If you make a good fold, they reward you with aces, that's how it goes.
Louis, when you gonna train me to fold the river? Just put me in infinite river spots.
You just close the eyes and fold, Louis, that's, that's the easiest thing.
I have top two pair.
You just fold.
You have to, you're calling with top two pair, I'm sure.
Don't trust yourself, Louis.
No, when they, no, when they two point five X plot it, I'll have to go and check, 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 check.
Oh, yeah. That one's kinda shady.
Are we story time again? What's going on here?
Louis is telling bad beat stories.
Louis always like shares these verbal hand histories in the middle of training, like, we don't follow what's happening. We can talk about it after.
Basically, two pairs not good when the wreck two, two point five X pops on the river.
Well, if the flush completes.
Or the straight.
Yeah.
Which, which in this case it was straight.
Literally.
Can we make there and fold sometimes?
I mean, I ain't good enough to fold.
Fold a lot. Fall every day. Because it's under the gun versus under the gun.
Uh, ten bags he opens like.
Reverse implied odds. Your pair draw is no good.
All the ways it's thin.
Can I just? Point, wait, can I just point out, uh? Uh, our big blind coin range, we have a bunch more stuff at the bottom of the deck and like nothing at the top of the deck.
Yeah, versus the two BP ranges, it's nice to have the other end of the board.
Then our pair draws are live.
Exactly.
The live pair draw.
Look at that fat, that fat range at the bottom, like eight six off, six five off, six three suited, no problem, ten six suited, getting in there.
I know.
King Jack off, no thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, Tim.
We, we wanna cool of the aces, but.
Suited ace too good. Can flop the flusher.
They're both playing the top of the deck, we'll play the bottom of the deck.
Yes, fold.
Yeah, you take the high road, I'll take the low road.
Louis, you wanna three bet?
No.
I love how that came up when you clicked three bet, it's like, no, stop. What are you doing?
I don't know.
No, they are.
Block, but it's funny.
No, they are.
Uh, what happened? It's gone.
It's gone. Everything is gone. Queen nine, Louis, Louis three bet.
No.
We call. Amazing. The range, oh.
Wow, King Jack suited is out.
Range is pretty tight here.
The guy, the guy min raised twelve, fourteen picks from EP.
That scared you?
Bit.
He has no shoves there.
Yeah.
And the guy flatted him too.
Three bets small.
Yeah.
Cool.
Alright, finally, we can call.
We can call here?
Yeah.
And Chippy B, this was a call a lot.
What was it, jamming Kid Jack, King ten?
Yeah.
I assume it's.
Add a little bit, King Jack, King ten, the. Jack ten suited.
I would not find those in fifty percent. I would think that it would be a punt, but it's still there.
I counted the Jack ten suited. But it was flat table.
Did you fold?
What's your calling range?
I don't have a calling range. It's all in a fold.
What about Ace Jack suited?
Huh?
Ace Jack suited.
No, I'm not calling anything. I don't think I have a calling range here. I think I'm just gonna be jamming or folding.
Are you jamming or folding Ace Jack suited?
Folding.
It sounds reasonable.
Okay.
I think the cutoff. His bottom will be like Ace ten suited, Ace Jack off, and so we wanna be a pip above that.
Oh. That's pretty tight. Pretty damn tight.
Or sorry, two pips above that. Apparently.
So I guess we need to do more of that fifty percent range. Two, two. Powerfold.
Oh.
Fold.
I'm not even sure base ten is in there.
All in?
Fold.
Fold. Ace five suited all in?
Nope. I mean, there's gonna be one. Oh no, there's none. Oh, it's come from top of range.
So just five pips off here.
Uh, call.
You don't, you don't jam here?
No.
Do you jam in these suited aces?
No. Ace Queen.
Yeah.
Sliver.
Good idea.
Oh, boy. So in general, suited aces are just flats. We don't defend any suited cards there, absolute nine, the cost.
Old.
Yeah, fold.
Cool.
Alright, call.
Uh, this might mix, like, I, I'm whatever here. We're probably getting enough odds to set mine, but it still might mix.
Mix what? Jam or fold?
Olds. Never fold.
Ah, not in the big blind.
I think it's a jam.
I'm calling.
I think it's a jam.
I. I don't know.
All the cookies in the meetings. Suit the aces. No, just face them.
So in Chippy V, you call Ace ten suited a lot, it looks like with some ICM, you call Ace Jack suited a lot.
So this is like get out of line.
No.
I can see a raise here.
No. Oh.
Oh, yeah, cause the small blinds, kinda like, we're deeper now, so the small blinds a bit wider. With their flats, so we can get a little out of line.
Hmm, okay, okay.
Yeah, so that's what we get to get out of line with.
There's a whole bunch, yeah.
Late position open, small blind call, or start getting deeper stacked, you get to have a lot more bluffs.
Okay, yeah, it makes sense. Even jamming wide, right? Be nine grenade.
Against cutoff and small blind, okay. Uh. Call.
We're pretty deep.
Might even fold, but I think it's a call.
Never a fold.
Never a fold?
Never.
Sliver of yellow? Yeah.
So I'm leaving all pairs here. Yeah.
Okay.
It's even hard to pull the trigger with nines, right? Like the three bet, that, it just feels so hard if you've got a position to play post flop. Shouldn't say, it might not be hard to play, but it's hard to win.
Eight big blinds, oh.
Oh.
Uh, I fold.
And then what's in their calling range? Pocket eight, pocket nine?
So.
This part range.
I'm not gonna have, again, I don't think I'm gonna have calls, I'm just gonna, uh, try to. I mean, I guess we got some calls, right? Maybe aces.
Yeah, we're closing the action, so we're gonna have some calls here.
But it's not gonna be a lot, right? It's gonna be like top of range and some spec lip stuff, like maybe aces, ace five suited, ace four suited. Maybe aces, ace five suited, maybe like.
You're not gonna have ace five suited in.
Maybe like.
It's eight picks.
King, queen, I, I don't know, like, I don't wanna call here much, but I know we're gonna have a little bit of calls. I'm, I'm pretty much all interfold. Honestly, I'm, I don't know how to balance my ra, my aces range.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Maybe there is no call.
There's no call.
May, maybe, I don't know.
Let's see.
I think it's gonna be tens plus and.
I would say nines here.
No call.
No call.
It's really, it's really hard to balance aces there, right? Like, what else do you wanna call? Like, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, this guy's committed anyway, right?
In your position, so you gotta check flop.
What's, but what's buttons calling range? Is it just? Like, just aces, and like.
No, he's got, he's got probably like nines plus eight, yeah.
Oh, no, he's not, he's not overjamming anything, okay.
Yeah.
Calling all whole range makes sense.
If you call sevens here, and then the, the big blind rips it on you, how are you feeling?
It's a fold.
No, I think you have to, I, I mean, don't you have to cool, cause of pause?
Bottom pair, your bottom two pairs probably fold.
Nah.
Now, pot odds isn't the same with ICM.
Okay.
Risk premium and all that, plus our range was so tight.
What's our range here with Ace ten suited that are better?
Oh, gee. Small blind.
It's gonna be the usual. Ace Queen suited.
You fold it, you know?
Think it's Ace Queen suited, honestly, yeah, like, Jax plus.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't.
Ace King.
Probably not, to be honest with you.
I think tens plus, Ace Queen suited plus.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what to do with nines here.
I, I'm Jax, I'm not even tens, honestly.
No, I think tens, I think nine, nines is a fold.
Ace Queen off, yay or nay?
Nay.
Fold.
Uh, I'm Ace Jack suited, Ace King.
Ace Queen off, I'm folding.
I'm in.
I think, I think I'm in too.
I mean, from the big one, it was folded, so from the small one, it's gonna be tighter.
Oh, my goodness.
Calling stations.
Yeah, I'm too tight with my pairs, but I hit the other shit.
What's our EV loss, Louis?
Uh, abysmal. Minus.
Alright. Could be worse.
It sounds are good, mines you can fold, I mean, mines are whatever.
Use that suited, that folds, right? I need to be tighter when there's half of the field left. Very interesting.
Oh.
Yeah. It's, it is interesting, we're like not that close to cashing, but we still value our life a ton.
Yeah, we're very tight, right?
So.
Yeah, you've invested two hours in getting here, right? Well. At least. Online MTT.
Yeah, live, it's, you've.
Live, you might have been playing like four hours to get here.
Yeah, or six, or, yeah.
What do you guys think this one is?
Old.
Uh.
I think you're holding Ace Jack off as well.
Ace Jack, I don't think so, Louis.
I would. I think Ace Jack's a fold.
Oh, my goodness.
I was, I wanted a three bet small, but the flatter is so short.
Um, jam. So the downs? Yeah.
Well, I think it's more suited kings.
It'll be like Jack, Jack ten suited, yes, suit tens, and suited kings. It's both.
Look here, we see a little bit of that pattern, Ace ten suited, some calls Ace nine suited shoves.
Oh.
Should we do a little of, uh, twenty-five percent field remaining, or save it for another day?
Hmm, save it for another day.
Okay.
Louis still in shock with some of the folds he sees here.
I'm, I'm definitely shocked.
When?
Like this here. It's your best small.
I mean, it's twenty effective, so I think jam.
Cause you're too bad small, you faulted him, you called him, well.
I think it's yellow, cause, uh, there's a thirty stack behind us, and, uh, yeah.
I mean, I think if you free bet on the gun goes away, I don't, I don't think you fold.
Wanna see?
Yeah.
If, in what scenario? If they both jam?
If we three bet on under the gun.
I think we're too, too strong, man. But maybe you're right, for you.
We're calling shortly.
Yeah.
Well, now, under the gun two is probably calling.
Hey, you have a thin call, maybe. Ace Jack is folding.
Yeah, what if UTG two also, uh, puts in his eleven?
Easy fold.
Cause I just assumed you were free ban for values, if we're free ban for value, we're cooling, and they jam. I didn't see this as free bet bluff.
Oh, Ace King, look at this.
King folding, holy crap.
Oh, is this where the other one calls? Yeah, two people call, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, the church.
Jax are folding.
How could the church be folding?
Alright, but in real life, I'm not doing that, cause, uh, UTG two is just gonna have Ace ten offsuit.
It's true.
I've seen too much shit, man.
Oh.
Two, two, let's get out. We can play for a while.
I think we can call here, but it's close.
I think, yeah.
It just always feels bad, like, I don't know these spots, like, yeah, I can say click call, but I just always feels bad to be like overcalling to me. I guess on the button, you get to be wider.
The smaller pairs are the ones that will overcall.
We've seen, so. What do you do, uh, on the cutoff? It, it's like, say, uh, LoJack opens, Hijack calls, you're in a cutoff. You're folding, right?
I mean, yeah, you're gonna have to play more tight than in the cutoff. Than on the bottom.
Yeah.
It's, there's, yeah, there's like one extra rejam stack behind you that you're opening yourself up.
It's not even a rejam stack, I just think that like, I'm not, like, I'm not gonna have ultimate position post.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's important.
No, it doesn't matter, cause you're, you're just set mining, so. Position doesn't matter that much. It's, I think it's strictly the fact that there's an extra guy who's gonna pile it on you some percentage of the time.
I mean, I think it's both of those factors.
One extra alligator. As Peter would say, maybe.
It's happy.
I mean, this is cool.
No. It's not a call.
Versus Hijack, I think you call.
Yeah, wow.
It's late position, it's not, there's no early position, it's time.
You.
Calling with a lot of kings.
Yeah.
Yeah, middle position, late position, you get to be a bit wider.
I know, but I didn't think it was.
Interesting, like, the last time it folded ace, it only folded the one offsuit ace, or it's time it folded ace six and ace seven. Similar spot. That's the fold. That's the fold. Easy fold.
How about in the big blind?
Uh, I still fold.
I think in a big blind, it might be a call.
Two early positions, uh, ICM or like ace. Ten, I think. And this is where we shift to the bottom portion, we like.
Oh wait, no, we're on this. Yeah, but if we were in the big blind, closing the action, I think.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, I thought, yeah, but still, yeah.
I am on the fence.
I would fold this in the big blind, honestly.
Yeah. It's E P P.
Just, uh, click fold and look at big blind.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
I mean.
Even ace ten is folding, mixing.
E P E P, strong ranges, so.
Yeah. And we're thirty, so we have to be a little tighter, I guess, at thirty.
So we fold Ace Jack suited here? We fold.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Yeah.
Jeez. Oh my goodness.
We're folding ace queen suited.
Oh my goodness. And pocket nines, okay, okay.
So these are spots that are kind, to me, they're kind of interesting to do, like some HRC work sometime, like just for player types. So say you just assume under the gun's opening a reasonable range, but the hijacks a shitter. And it's just calling way too wide, give him a wide range, and then see how you can adjust versus shitters.
For sure.
Because that's a lot of extra chips in there if someone's a shitter with all kind of crap.
Oh.
All in?
No.
What about these?
Part between fold and call.
Fold Ace, Ace five suited as well.
Aha. Fold and call.
I mean, there's zero EV, so.
It's nice when you're torn and then it just mixes. It's like, alright, no wonder I was torn.
Damn, we have fifty bigs though. Hmm. With a big stack.
Oh.
Maybe we jam because we're the big stack.
No, not with queen. I don't.
Lewis, stop bumping. Oh my goodness.
So I mean, we're gonna, I mean, we get to be less tight here, though, surely. Yeah, look, look, we, we got them all covered by two X.
Yeah, throw our, uh, our big stack around a little bit.
Yeah. Call?
Oh, no.
My goodness, not even a call. Why is that? You calling King ten off there?
Under the gun, under the gun.
Ah, that's right, that's right. Well, we get to be way tighter. Yeah.
This is sending me back to the Harrington days.
I didn't think I was alive when that book came out.
I remember reading that.
So this is a good jam.
Jam, yeah. Yeah. What else do you jam here? Suit the jacks, all of them?
Suited tens.
So.
Harrington's just came out after I started playing.
Suit that down is more than suited nines.
The gap principle or whatever.
Oops.
I, I got also Vader's book on my, on the PDF, it's just way too techie.
Take your time, it's a good read, man. Well worked.
I'm folding.
I'm cooling.
Call.
Every time.
Wow, so losing a lot of chips fully.
Yeah. When squeezing small or just putting it in?
There's no squeeze, we want this stacked in.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there is.
There is.
There is, because you'll have hands that. Don't want to get all in three way, I suppose, if they both go along with it.
Yeah, you want to induce with that hand, right? You want to have an inducing range, I guess.
I'm out with this.
Yeah, you free bet small more ICM as well. Yeah, fold, yeah.
Two, two.
Uh, I guess we're inducing, no?
Yeah. Oh, it's small?
Um. Cool.
Surely we can call.
Why? We just know when.
Yeah.
Man.
No, I didn't think it's a fold.
This is a tough one.
No, no.
For the big time.
Yellow or green.
We covered them, we can bully them.
Yeah, well, the small blind knows that. He's gonna be tight as shit.
Putting it in.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
What's the worst? Do you do it? Ace tens can't be doing that, right?
No, this is the worst.
Yeah, you get to go, you get to be a lot tighter when you cover by a decent amount. I mean, a lot wider.
Still have some yellow.
Wow. Ace ten.
The stands in there.
Pretty wide, a lot wider than I thought.
You get to put them in the box when you cover them.
Yeah, which is small blinds range.
I didn't think.
This is what's throwing me, like, I, I got him so tight right here, maybe I'm, that's my mistake.
I didn't think we get the bully as the big stack this far off of the bubble like this.
Yes, so he's, he doesn't have much, he's just got some stuff.
It's more rare, sometimes.
I think what it might be less than bullying is like. These are good jams when we have the chips to spare. And when we're like equal stack, we really don't want to bust, so we just tighten up the risk premium.
You look at the small blinds range, it's just a bunch of speculative junk.
Yeah, but if we had eleven bigs here, I think we would see some of these hands calling rather than jamming.
I mean, even if we had twenty bigs.
Well, their rage is gonna change, but this is like, this was like, I didn't know what their rage was. I thought it was gonna be a lot tighter than this. This is just all shit. Basically, they're protecting some speculative stuff with the bottom pairs. So we're happy, we're basically playing against under the guns open range. And this is dead money in the pot, the small blind, right?
Yeah, that's a good point, too. We haven't seen a lot against small blind in there.
So what's a small blind call? When we have him call, have us, what do we do with that hand? Jam?
Yeah, we get, we get ace ten often.
Yeah, because we are just too deep here.
We have the risk advantage.
So we're trying to ISO under the gun with Ace Jack, basically.
Yeah.
Small blind can't really continue.
Not even, I don't think they can call that much.
Yeah, I don't think small blind can continue with much at all. Maybe he's got to call his bottom pairs, I don't know. That's why I was curious, what he defends?
Oh, defends pretty wide.
No, but what's, under the, what's small blind defend? That's what I mean, we're ISO and. Yeah, so he's only calling off sixes.
All blind is not playing.
Right.
You're right, it is just super dead. Money.
I mean, there's only twenty-seven combos.
Those two blinds is basically just all dead money.
Yeah.
Cool.
A GTO, the problem is in real life. They're gonna be in there a lot more better stuff.
Oh.
Surely we just jam here.
The stronger their calling range is, the worse jamming those offsuit ace, nine, ace tens are gonna be.
Old.
Alright, so here. We do have the chips. If we want to try to.
We're covered, but we're covered by a smooth line on the left.
Just a fold.
Still hold, alright.
Yeah.
Three bet small was, uh, competitive.
Yeah, I jam, I jam, yeah.
Yeah, the offsuit one just starts to jam a lot.
Oh. Hmm, cool.
Call, but it's like the bottom.
Like it out of line versus hijack.
Never folds, huh?
I bet ace eight or ace seven will start to fold.
Ace seven.
Oh, huh. Not as tight as I thought, though. Fold.
Uh, yeah. Next thing, right?
Yeah.
These guys can jam into them, right?
I think we can.
Okay. Let's do it, yeah. Alright, we're gonna wrap it up early today, guys.